Good evening, I'd like to call the General Committee meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and a pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, we call upon you this evening, asking for your guidance in our decision-making. Give us the wisdom to make our judgments based on the best interest of this community and the children we serve. These things we ask in your name.
Amen.
Mr. Long, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Bocey.
Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
Ms. Jackson.
Here.
Ms. Lee Bowman is not with us. Mr. Long.
Here.
Ms. Lemoine.
Here.
Ms. Dysart.
Here.
Ms. Rodney.
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
And Ms. White.
Thank you, Ms. Bocey. Before we go on to the next item, I'd like to take a point of privilege at this time to ask for a moment of silence. We lost one of our kindergarten students yesterday to a fatal accident. Deonte White. We're all very saddened by the loss of Deonte and our heartfelt condolences and sympathies go out to the family of Deonte White. Thank you. And again, our deepest condolences and sympathies go out to the White family. Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is an education item. Mr. Warner.
Thank you, Mrs. Dysart. 2.1 Head Start Continuum Application and Update. Chantel. Swellinger, are you there?
Gallagher.
Gallagher?
Yes.
Close.
Good evening, thank you for allowing me to come tonight to speak to you. I'm here to present and seek your approval for the Head Start Continuation Application for the 24-25 school year. I will meet with Policy Council next week to also present this to them and ask for their approval as well. You have a set of handouts in front of you. They include the key parts of the grant. For the 24-25 school year, we will devote our funding to preserving our universal preschool program. So besides Head Start funds that we receive, we also receive funds from LA4, Title I, 8G, the Excellence Education Fund, IDEA, and local dollars as well to help any student who resides in St. Bernard Parish attend our preschool program for free. We have seven Head Start classrooms that are situated on five of our elementary campuses. Davies and Lacoste are the only two sites that do not have Head Start classrooms. And all 15 of our other classrooms are a mix of the funding that I just talked about, and they are amongst all seven elementary campuses. So speaking directly about the Head Start application, you will see the first handout, 2.1. Our federal contribution that is given to us this year is $1,093,864. Of that money, $15,221 has to be devoted to training and technical assistance. So we will use the remaining dollars for our personnel salaries and benefits, which all of our teachers and paras are on the district salary schedule. And then we'll also use the money to fund other categories such as supplies for the students, because we do not ex-ent provide any school supplies. We will use it for liability insurance, any travel for our teachers attending any type of conferences, audits, staff training, and field trips as well. The next several pages describe the budget in detail, letting you know where the money's exactly going as far as salaries, benefits, travel, supplies. I'll let you look over that for a second before I move on.
Mrs. Dysart?
I just have a quick question on the teacher aides and other education personnel.
Mm-hmm.
How do we have 6.5?
So when we-
Where does the .5 come in?
We, so the Head Start dollars, they don't always able to fund our entire staff. So with the money that we have and how it was broken down, we were able to fund seven of our teachers, which that is all of our teachers, and then we were able to do six and a half of our paras. So we were able to cover six full salaries and half of one. And usually, we get a COLA, which is a cost of living adjustment, that usually comes sometime in May. And so we're able to take those dollars and cover the remaining that we weren't able to do with the initial federal funds. Yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else on that handout?
Okay, next is the Continuum Application Narrative. And Head Start has moved to a five-year application process, which means that we're able to submit an abbreviated application every year. This is our last year in the five-year period to submit this abbreviated application. And so what that means is just we can submit any minor changes to our goals, service delivery, any of those types of things, before we have to really look at our goals again and change them and update them for the next five years. The only major change that we made in our goals was for goal number three, which is on page three, in literacy. The last statement, our teachers this year began to implement the program Hegarty to help strengthen phonemic awareness in our preschool classrooms, to make them work on rhyming words, beginning sounds, ending sounds, blending sounds together to make words in preparation for dibbles at the end of the preschool year, and then also when they're tested again at the beginning of the kindergarten year. So we did add that in, so Head Start can see that we did start that this school year. The remaining pages, there were no changes to anything in service areas, eligibility requirements, health, transportation, and our structure. And then starting on page nine is just a breakdown of the budget narrative. It just lets Head Start know exactly that we were able to fund seven teachers, six and a half paras, the nurses' salary, half of the director's salary, half of my secretary's salary, and my family service worker as well. And then it broke down also the benefits, travel, supplies, and all those other items that we talked about earlier. So this will be uploaded into the Head Start system as well with the application that is due on April 1st. So I thank you for allowing me to present the application to you tonight, and we hope to receive your approval for submission, which I said is due on April 1st.
Any questions? Mrs. Dysart?
I'd just like to make a motion that we accept the Head Start Continuation Application as presented.
Second by Mrs. White. We have a motion by Mrs. Dysart, a second by Mrs. White. Anyone else have any other questions? Mr. Long?
Just one quick question. The federal contribution, is that based on the number of children you serve?
Um, yes. So Head Start has given us 112 slots again, which we've had for the last two years. So that's what they base off of, yes.
Okay. So if the, if the number of children served changes, then the contribution-
The money would be different, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question. So that number, the federal contribution, is that an increase over?
Yes, it was an $87,000 increase from last year, yes.
Okay. And is that something that's been increasing annually for?
Yes, I think last year it increased about $53,000, and then this year it went up to $83,000. And I know Head Start's starting to look into their policies and procedures and their regs, and their big push is for workforce, like being able to provide more money so we can secure teachers and get more families to come into the Head Start program, so, yes.
That's great. All right, so we have a, Mrs. Dysart, I mean, I'm sorry, Mrs. Bocey.
But I do want you to notice on two, where the non-federal share, that's our in-kind contribution. Because while we get these amounts of monies for the Head Start program, which primarily goes to the staff that we have, and we're one of the few Head Start programs that actually has our, that our teachers on the same salary schedule as the rest of our employees. Most of the time, and many of the other Head Start programs, which are run by other agencies, their salaries are not commensurate with the, say, the local public education people. But the non-federal share, you know, we have to contribute a great deal of money in terms of transportation and food services and all of the ancillary health. So when we take the Head Start monies and we apply them mainly to the program, then we have to make up all of the other services that we offer. And that's just a really small amount. We actually contribute a lot more, right? From the skeleton. And, you know, and as you mentioned in the very beginning, our universal four-year-old program, we draw from so many different funding sources, and then anything that is left over, we pay for it locally as well. So we, we have a significant amount of local funds to fund the Head Start program as well. I mean, to fund the four-year-old program as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Bocey. So I have another question. So the application, you're gonna have to submit another application, five-year application next year?
So it'll be pretty much the same, but it's, right, we have to look at our goals again, set new goals for the program. They look at the curriculum. We have to show them that we're matching the curriculum with state standards and things like that. So it's a lengthier process, starting in the beginning of the five-year period, yes.
Is that when they come make a site visit also?
No, the site visit, we just had our site visit in November of this year.
Oh, okay.
They come during your fifth year and I believe your third year. And then they're also starting to implement pop-up visits, so we haven't experienced that yet, but that could happen as well, I guess.
Thank you. All right, so we have a motion by Mrs. Dysart, a second by Mrs. White. Please cast your vote.
Motion passes ten zero.
Thanks. Thank you.
Mrs. Dysart?
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Next item is an update on the school enrollment numbers.
Ms. Bocey?
Okay, so in your packet, we just have briefly updated the enrollment numbers. The bottom of the page is what they were in September when we presented them to you initially. At the top of the page are the February numbers as well. You can see we have a net, I guess, decrease from September to February of 54 students overall. That's primary, even though the numbers have increased in the pre-K and elementary numbers, the major decline you see is the high school, but that's attributable to the January graduates. So we graduate a significant number of students from the high school after the first semester, and that accounts for the real decline in the total numbers. Were there any questions at this time?
Uh, so, Ms. Bocey, that means the numbers will go back up?
In October.
In October.
If we remain pretty steady, which we have over the past several years.
Right.
Like, if you look at the individual school numbers, you can see they're all about the same, plus or minus a few students, depending on who enrolls during the school year and then who leaves. You know, people move in different kinds of situations. But you always at midterm see a drop at the high school level.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Ms. Harris?
Yeah, Ms. Bocey, I'm looking at the change in numbers at St. Bernard Middle. Where, what happened there? Do we know?
Well, we have some of our students who have moved out and going to different schools throughout the district, including our alternative school, and have moved out of parish as well, or moved to one of our other middle schools. So we have a loss overall of one student in the middle schools.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. There being no other questions, thank you for that presentation. And next item on the agenda, Personnel Items. And tonight with us is Ms. Burchard. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. You should have the minutes in front of you, our personnel changes. I do want to point out that we hired three bus drivers. I also want to point out that we have a retirement. Jeffrey Joseph, he's been a longtime custodian at Tris Middle School, and I'm very familiar with him. He was there with me during my 10-year tenure, and he's sad to see him go. He loved our school and took very good care of it, so that is a great loss.
Were there any questions at this time? Just on behalf of the board, we want to thank Mr. Jeffrey Joseph for his service to our system and his many years at Tris, and we want to wish him a very happy retirement. Well deserved. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Burchard.
Thank you.
Glad to see those bus drivers have been hired.
Yeah.
All right. Next item on the agenda is Finance Committee. Ms. Jackson?
All right, item 4.1, we have an update on food cost increases in our child nutrition program. And with us tonight, we have Mr. Morel. Good evening.
Hello, good evening. So this is the paper that you have in front of you. This was a few answers that from a couple of weeks ago. Mr. Warner asked me to come back and explain some food costs and what was going on and kind of just the basic overview of where we're at right now. So what I did was I compared July 1st, July 1st, 2022, to and through December 31st, 2022. I compared those numbers to July 1st, 23, to December 31st, 23. So there is overall, in general, based upon everything that we serve, is there was a 13%, 13% food increase, increase in food. So that kind of basically, doing some research, it averages the same food increase that everybody has seen across America, like through stores and household, through the household food. So then we took it a step further. So the meals served, now with that price increase, you can also see in breakfast, we served 287 more meals during, comparing those tamalons. And then also in lunch, we served just over 4,500 more meals compared to those individual tamalons. So that could, so the price of food did go up, but we also did serve 4,500 more students, or 4,500 more plates, right? And then the breakdown underneath, so I'm gonna explain the bread. It shows us it's an 83% increase. Now, that is because we did have the prior year, in 2022, the contract was with Flowers Bakery. So they had the contract for many years. However, they elected not to participate in the contract that we have now for this, for the current school year, for the 23-24 school year. So, and Flowers Bread that they provide now, we had to go with them, because that was the only other bid. And just in general, their bread is more expensive. So it's not only like the regular price increase, but just generally their bread is more. That's why it shows up that high. So we took the, we went back through the bids of the 2022 and compared 23 prices for Flowers. And it's about a 30% increase. So both of those situations kind of made it compared to where it was at the 83% increase. So that's the explanation of that. And you can see milk falls kind of just in line at the 11%. Canned goods, there was really no change. We actually, some of those prices went down a little bit. The frozen food was a 29% increase. That could be a different, like dinner rolls and kind of like regular grocery-type things that come frozen. So that's a lot of part of that, some of that increase. And then the, if you look at meals, the meat, excuse me, and proteins, that's a 2% increase. That's generally, that's a lot less than the average because, you know, because of our commodity program and how we move through processing foods through our commodity program. So what I did was I used a lot of our commodity money for proteins, because obviously that's the most expensive part, to try to use that money to help feed the children in a much more beneficial area, so to kind of help use that money a lot more. So that's why, and that's why you see that percentage is a lot less. Do you have any questions?
So anybody having questions? Mr. Long?
Let's see. So with these increases, are we looking possibly at increasing the cost of school, school meals to the students at any time?
That's something, Ms. Bocey, and I will discuss, but rather not to.
They're all on free, with the community program, which is all free lunch.
Yes, but, current. And we're still on the CEP program, and we're looking to renew that this year also, the community eligibility program. So, but all the kids will still eat free, and all the kids are eating, or eating free now, and we're gonna continue to do that.
I thought at one time we were like 80, 85% on free and reduced lunches, but now it's 100%. Well, that's good.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Warner?
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. And thank you, Mr. Morel, for putting together this report. Appreciate it. I'm honored to actually put this together, and, you know, 13% is a significant increase year over year for our food costs, and that's, that's what the school board is paying, and we all go with the lowest bid. So imagine what our families are that are going to the groceries and buying their meals each day, so. We just, we do provide free breakfast and free lunch for our students. Now, are we gonna do the summer program this year, where we feed?
Yes, sir, we are. Yes, Mr. Warner, we're gonna, we are gonna do all of our summer feeding sites, all gonna be open sites for that.
And, and that's open for all of our students?
Yes, they can. So obviously, the priority is that our children that are in summer school, they provide a lunch there. But they are open. So with that meaning, there's kids that are in the community that need to eat lunch, we can provide them a lunch also.
And how do we qualify that? How do we determine? Did it, did they sign up for it, or they?
So there's gonna be a media release that's going in the St. Bernard Voice, and it'll explain all of that to everyone. And they can use that as a reference, but yes, everyone at a 10th school is eligible for a lunch. They can go eat lunch in their community at a school.
Any, any child in the parish, regardless of what school they would go to, is eligible to walk on the site and get a free meal during the summertime. They don't have to sign up ahead of time. If there's gonna be a group coming consistently, we ask them to let us know, so we'll know about how much food to prepare. But any child in St. Bernard Parish can come onto one of our sites and receive that meal in the summertime.
Yeah, and here shortly, in the coming weeks, there'll be a list of all, follow those locations,
and those will all be in the, in the St. Bernard Voice.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Within it, we'll have times for breakfast, times for lunch, addresses in all the schools and everything. All the information will be provided.
So is that something that we would get if we tracked the number of meals that we provide? Is that something we would get reimbursement for from federal dollars, or is that something that we're providing?
No, that, that, we do get a reimbursement at, once the program ends, we compile all the numbers and it gets submitted, then we get reimbursed, just like we do on a monthly basis. So it's kind of the same situation.
And we try to set the sites up at the locations where we have any summer activity. So all of our summer school programs, our performing arts programs, our science camp, so we will open those particular areas because we know that we do have children attending a summer activity at those sites.
Right.
Yeah, I can give you, that's gonna be Davies, Pauline Nero, Riley, Andrew Jackson, and then, and the high school side, it's gonna be on the academy side.
And the MoMA Center.
And the MoMA, yes.
Because of the science camp.
Ms. Lemoine?
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. I just want to thank you, Mr. Morel, for your leadership, and thank all of the cafeteria technicians that work really diligently, not only to prepare the food each day, but make sure that they're meeting all of those guidelines for health. And I wanted to ask if you could come back and give us the formal invitation for the Cafeteria Food Service Week, where we're invited to come and serve in the cafeteria. It's always a joy for us to be able to go and serve alongside of the cafeteria staff and thank them for their hard work. So if you don't mind coming back and giving us those dates. We love a hairnet. Yes. Thank you.
All right, anybody else?
I just have one question. You were listing the sites. There's nothing kind of east of Davies. There's nothing on the eastern end of the parish as far as the summer food service site. Nothing in Violet, nothing?
No, the first one is Davies.
It's Davies.
Anybody else? Thank you, Ms. Morel.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. All right, moving on. 4.2, request for permission to advertise for bid for the Official Journal. Good evening, Ms. Fernandez, how are you?
Good evening. Okay, this is the time of the year when we usually put out requests for bids and proposals for the different annual bids that we have, and the first one is Official Journal. We're required to publish our minutes and other public notices in an Official Journal. So this is the official request for permission to advertise for bids for Official Journal for next fiscal year, July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025.
All right, any questions? Mr. Long?
I'll make a motion to send this to the full board.
We have a motion by Mr. Long, we have a second by Ms. Lemoine. Any further discussion, questions? There being none, please cast your vote.
Mr. Campbell? Motion passes ten zero.
All right, moving on. Item 4.3, request for permission to advertise to, to bid for vehicle painting and body repairs.
Okay, again, this is an annual bid for painting and body repairs to buses and other district vehicles. It'll, again, it'll be for the fiscal year, July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025.
We have a motion by Mr. Warner. We have a second by Mr. Campbell. Any questions? There being none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes ten zero.
Moving on. Item 4.4, request for permission- Moving on, item four point four, request for permission to advertise to bid gasoline, diesel, and other fluids.
Okay, this is our annual bid for, as stated, gasoline, diesel, lubricating oil, antifreeze, and transmission fluid for next fiscal year.
We have a motion by Ms. Diceart. Second by Ms. White. Any questions, discussion? There being none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes ten zero.
Next up, item four point five, request for permission to advertise to bid paper, cleaning, and custodial supplies.
Again, this is the annual bid for all paper, cleaning, and custodial supplies used in our custodial and school operations and food services program.
Any questions? We have a motion by Ms. Lemoine. We have a second. Second in by Mr. Campbell. Any discussion? There being none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes ten zero.
And then item four point six, permission to solicit proposals for audiovisual equipment upgrades at Shellman High Cultural Arts Center and MoMA's. This issue too.
And this is soliciting proposals. As you know, when we initially built our cultural arts center and renovated MoMA's Center quite some time ago after Hurricane Katrina, we put some audiovisual equipment. Now it's getting to the end of the life of that equipment. So we would like to solicit proposals to upgrade and replace the necessary equipment in those two facilities.
Any idea on a ballpark of what that's going to cost?
That's what we hope to find out, but it'll be a substantial amount. We have funding in place to accommodate that.
From our building maintenance fund?
Uh, various sources, different.
Any questions? Also, we have a motion by Ms. Diceart.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Long. Any other questions?
I just have a comment. I would just like to congratulate the entire cast and crew of Oklahoma, the play that was just presented this past weekend. The, the, it, it's amazing the amount of talent that, of our students that we have here in St. Bernard Parish. And, you know, the, both Annalise and Ariana Kassar, along with all the other teachers and volunteers who helped with, with, with the stage, with the scenery, with the costumes. It was just extraordinary. And I just want to congratulate everyone who participated and helped make Oklahoma such a wonderful success. And, um, you know, the orchestra, the music was beautiful. It, it was just all, just unbelievably well done. And, um, I just want to congratulate all, all those who participated and to tell them thank you for all their extra hard work. Thank you.
And if I may add, Ms. Diceart, what did you, it's a true partnership and a true community partnership because the kids are out there performing. And as you mentioned, you know, Annalise Kassar and Ariana Kassar. And then the tech crew is phenomenal. And that's comprised of about thirty-five to forty of our kids on that tech crew with, um, under Fred Aver and Brianna Acosta, who do an incredible job with those particular students. And then the orchestra was a combination of many of our music teachers, um, our regular teachers, Karen Mellering, because they, I hate to start naming them, but, you know, our band directors at the middle school, Smeg Lancaster and Keenan Jaber, as well as many of our teachers who participate in that and our students, some of the community band members. We even had a talk to a young lady Friday night who is taking music at Loyola, but has a connection to us, she comes and plays. So it is a true effort, the behind the scenes, the parents who volunteer, as you mentioned, who are doing scenery in the back, who are sewing the costumes, which were phenomenal. I mean, so that, those are productions that really bring many parts of the entire St. Bernard Parish community together to work with our kids. And our kids do shine and it was an incredible, you know, incredible performance. So again, um, if anybody has missed that, you know, the, I think the next play that we're doing, I'm not sure exactly what it's going to be in June because they haven't told me yet, but for the Performing Arts Academy this summer. So kind of mark your calendars at the very end of June, early July for our next performance and whatever it's going to be, I know it's going to be phenomenal as well.
You know, it's always good because the tickets sell out super fast.
Yes. They were all sold out all weekend.
All right, so we have, Ms. Diceart, you made a motion, correct?
Correct.
Do we have a second? Oh, Joe seconded. All right, any other questions, discussion? There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten zero.
I lost my train of thought. I forgot what happened.
It's time for, we're going to hear from Mr. Clemmons about our update on our insurance, property insurance for the year.
Okay, in your packet, uh, you have a renewal of our property insurance for next fiscal year, oh, well, actually for April first, two thousand twenty-four through March thirty-first of two thousand twenty-five. They kind of lapse over between fiscal years. But as Mr. Rodriguez said, uh, we have our friends from Clemmons Insurance, Richie Clemmons and Timothy Clemmons here. We have been, as you may say, beating the bushes out there trying to get a good deal for us. In fact, Mr. Richie was just showing me a page of three pages or four pages of companies that they had contacted to try to participate in this. And this is the best so far that they have received. Now, uh, there's four options presented to you, A, B, C, and D. A, option A mirrors what we currently have in place, which is five hundred, fifty million dollars, all perils, thirty million dollars, named storm in coverage with a million dollar deductible. Uh, option B is the same coverage, but with a five hundred thousand dollar deductible. And option C and D increase our total coverage, not our named storm coverage, which stays at thirty million dollars to a hundred million for all perils. So it gives us another, uh, fifty million dollars of coverage on top of the, what we currently have. And you'll see the premiums on the third page is a comparison of all of them. The second column of numbers is what we currently have, our current premium of three point eight eight two million. And then it has all the options, A, B, C, and D. As we said, option A is the same limits that we currently have. And you'll see the premium has not only stayed the same, but gone down about eight thousand dollars. So we were pleasantly surprised that it didn't increase. We're expecting, I think Mr. Clemmons was expecting a slight increase, five to fifteen percent. But luckily it did not increase. It went down slightly. The other three, which change the limits and the coverages, will have increased premium. And you'll see those premiums and an additional premium for the, uh, uh, lessening of the deductible, but keeping the same limits, it would be an additional fifty-five thousand dollars of our current premium. And to increase the coverage for fifty million dollars would be additional premium as well. But based on these numbers, our recommendation would be to keep our current coverage, uh, which is option A, which would be a premium of three million eight eighty-five, eight forty-six. However, uh, we do have another op, we do have some feelers, all the Clemmons do have some feelers out there and are trying to get an additional insurer to come in with maybe more favorable terms. And they got a email just after being started where they responded. They haven't given us numbers yet, but they indicated that they might be interested. Very interested. And I'll let Richie expand on that.
Yeah, we, uh, this patchy is an amateur relationship direct with, uh, London. And, uh, so by doing that, we were able to skip a couple of pockets on the way over. And, uh, they've been very receptive to the phone calls we've been handling with them. They're anxious. You know, insurance companies have two emotions, greed and fear. And greed always trumps fear. The last year was fear and this year, well, you know, if I knock a couple bucks off of it, I can still get it. So that's hopefully the mode will kick in as we had like fifteen years ago when the prices were going down steadily. So maybe we've seen a little turn. I'm hoping, but I'm not sure. This is the bird we have in hand right now.
So as we said, our recommendation right now is option A. However, we reserve the right to come to the next meeting with maybe a better deal that may be more favorable to the board. So you may want to either provisionally recommend option A or just defer to the next meeting and, uh, wait and see what numbers we have in hand. That, the thing is, we're trying to get these numbers in by the nineteenth, next week's meeting, so y'all can vote on it.
Any questions? Uh, Mr. Long?
Yeah, uh, it looks like it's a pretty good deal. They, in the last couple of years, it looks like they hit us hard. It's nice to have a, a small reduction. So, yeah, I would, uh, I'm encouraged to see this. I'd, I'd make a motion to recommend to the full board the...
Just pass it through with no recommendation.
What's that?
I would recommend that we just pass it through to the full board with no recommendation and look at the total numbers next week.
That's even better, yes, okay.
Hopefully they'll be in.
I'll second that.
You think you can get them in within a week, Mr. Clemmons?
Well, we initially talked, we were thinking it was the twenty-sixth, meeting coming to the nineteenth, but we probably couldn't close. But as David had just said, we got working on it. We just heard it from, from the meeting.
I'll change my motion to, uh, send it to the full board without a recommendation. I, I'd like to ask a question. Went through this last year at this time and, uh, I, if I remember correctly, Mr. Fernandez, you know, when you go with the insurance, that's, you know, saving you a nice amount of money. Are we able, if two storms was to hit, we able, uh, by having a larger deductible? Are we financially secure that we can handle two storms?
Yes, sir, we can handle the deductible. We have money, uh, in our maintenance fund and in reserve in our general fund to cover those eventualities.
And, and real quick, roughly from A to, from A to option D, how much money are we saving roughly, uh, in the premium?
Well, the, with, the difference between option A and option D is about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
But with option D, we get an extra fifty million of, uh...
Fifty million on top of what we currently have.
Because, uh, last year when I, uh, you know, did a little reading, you know, from, uh, with the experts on the hurricane season, uh, they had, uh, the El Nino was in and that's the wind shear and it tends to make the hurricanes less violent and it tends to push them up the East Coast. Now, that's just a guess. When I read up last week on it, they think that the, that the La Nina is going to take over maybe halfway through and we're going to lose the wind shear and possibly pushing the storms to the East Coast. On top of that, uh, the ocean waters, the ocean off of Africa in the Gulf of Mexico is supercharged this year with heat. We already have July, we, we're one or two months ahead of the heat of the oceans. We already almost at July, uh, temperatures. So they think it could be a very violent, the storms could be way more intense. So, you know, basically what we come down to, last year we gambled and everything worked out and we saved a lot of money. But if possibly if they correct on it, and it's just projections, you know, it's just, just guesses, but it's educated guesses by them. So possibly, you know, I'm concerned that, you know, we could have, uh, maybe just get one, hopefully none, but possibly we could get one storm that's very intense and, you know, the extra option where, where we pay more, but we get an extra fifty million coverage on top, that may be something, you know, I'm going, you know, we should consider as a board. And, and maybe it's, you know, we, well, you're going to get the quotes from those other companies, which is, we're going, hopefully. So, uh, so basically what we're doing here, we're going to put off the vote till you get the quotes and then we'll, then we'll vote on it and see what we're going to do.
We'll answer for the same offer, yeah.
Yes, sir. So, yeah, because you know, right now I'm looking at, you know, maybe a safe place would be, you know, a little more expensive for more coverage. Because if you get two storms and it's way intense and then you got an extra fifty million on top, but we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. It's just a thought of mine. Thank you all so much. Is that it for questions?
I have another question. So when the bid went out, was a date, um, submitted on the bid itself? When, when you asked for the proposals, was there a deadline on that? And I guess my question is, if we wait on Lloyds of London, are we ignoring our own process?
Well, this wasn't necessarily a bid process. This, they have been negotiating with these companies since last year. They've been working on this for several months. So it isn't a bid in the sense that we advertise and give a date to come. They've been negotiating back and forth with these companies for quite some time. So there was no real deadline. The deadline was to get it before the end of April when our other, uh, policy expires. So they still are negotiating. In fact, they're still are negotiating to get a better deal for us, so.
So it was more like, it was more of an RFP?
I'm sorry?
So it's more of an RFP?
It's more of their, our, each of the record who has been negotiating on behalf.
Okay, thank you.
Throughout the year.
That's it. Thank you so much. Is all questions? Oh, okay. Go ahead and, uh, vote on it? All right, I thought we pushed it back.
Motion passes ten zero.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Ms. Fernandez. Okay, next item on the agenda are the superintendent's notes, Ms. Vuchain.
Just some quick announcements. We talked about the play Oklahoma. I just want to remind everybody on Thursday, we're going through our, uh, district accreditation with the Cognia review and we will be doing that virtually pretty much all day on Thursday. That'll just be, uh, made with a couple of our staff members. Then next week on the nineteenth at five o'clock before our meeting, we have the academic games reception. So please, you know, we arrive at five o'clock, um, next week and our students and their families will be with us to, um, cheer our kids on. And the next day, on the twentieth, the chamber is sponsoring along with us, the Women's Professional Network at Shellman High School, where the girls, um, will participate in that mentoring event, which is always very, very nice. So that's going to be on the twentieth. That's, um, nine o'clock. And then on March twenty-second, the follow, that Friday, a reminder again about our Special Olympics at Shellman High School's stadium at nine thirty. Should be the opening of the Special Olympics on Friday, March twenty-second. And ag magic. The calendar just continues to explode, as they say, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Vuchain. Are there any questions? Okay, there being none, is there a motion to adjourn? There's a motion by Mr. Campbell. Is there a second? Seceded by Ms. Harris. All in favor of the motion? Sin Favis saying aye.
Aye.
The meeting's now adjourned. Thank you and good night.